Good evening, Holliston. Welcome to the Select Board's meeting for Thursday, January 21st, 2021. A special out-of-cycle meeting for us this week. We set aside some time this evening to dive into an exciting project that many of you have heard about, located at Marshall Street in Holliston. This evening, we're going to hear from our point person on this project over the last couple of years, Beth Greenblatt, as well as Rennie Friedman from Soul Systems, who is the selected vendor for this project. Before we get into this evening's discussion, I see several people queued up on the Zoom call, which is great. We hope more will join us. I wanted to give you some brief updates on how to join the conversation or participate this evening. So we'll be asking those that want to speak through the forum to raise their hand feature on your device. If you're using a smartphone or a tablet and want to speak, touch the screen. And depending upon the device, either in the bottom or top right of the screen, there are three dots. Press the three dots and then press "Raise Hand." If you're using a laptop or desktop and want to speak, click on the "Participant" at the bottom of the screen. This will open a window to the right. In the bottom right-hand corner of the participants' window, click on "Raise Hand." If you're dialing in by phone, please press *9 to indicate you want to speak. When it's your turn, you'll be asked to unmute. For those on a computer, tablet, or phone, you'll receive a message to do so. If you're calling in by phone, when you're announced by the Select Board, you will need to press *6 to unmute. And if you're unable to find the "Raise Hand" feature, you can send a chat notice to our town of Holliston. We have a couple of people from our technology division tonight helping us with this meeting. We hope by now, folks are broadly familiar with how to participate. But if you encounter any problems, let us know. So we, this evening, are just dealing with the solar project on Marshall Street. We will get underway promptly here with hopefully an introduction by Beth Greenblatt and Rennie. Good evening. If you folks would just take a couple of minutes to introduce who you are, where you're with, what company you're with, we'll then turn it over to you folks to introduce Holliston into the update on the project. Why don't we start with you, Beth? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Hi, I'm Beth Greenblatt. I work for Beacon Integrated Solutions, and I have been supporting the town as its agent on its side of the table through the procurement process and much of the activities so far with respect to the entitlement. This is a terrific project, and after Rennie has an opportunity to introduce himself, I'm happy to provide an overview followed by much more detailed information at the status of the project, the next steps, and an anticipated schedule.
Thanks, Beth. Before we get to you, Rennie, I just wanted to take a brief moment again to let folks know how instrumental Beth has been to this project. Beth, I did a little bit of research. I think our first meeting was in the fall, around October of 2018, when he came before us to introduce the idea of supporting this project. It's incredibly complex. There is a lot going on between the public procurement process, the evaluation of the bid, the technical nature of what we're trying to accomplish, and ultimately bear some fruit in the form of additional new revenues to our community upon land that is otherwise not usable. So I want to state for the record, I've not worked with somebody as talented and as secure in what they're doing as Beth. We are in great hands. She's done a phenomenal job for us. You have my personal thanks for that, too, Beth. A lot of heavy lifting over the last couple of years, so thank you for that. Rennie, if you would like to take a few minutes to introduce yourself, we'd appreciate it. Good evening.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone, Chairman, members of the board. Thanks for having us tonight. Again, as noted, my name is Rennie Friedman. I'm the Director of Project Development at Soul Systems. Soul Systems, we are an American solar developer and financier. We do a number of projects across the US, and I've been working on the project since we were awarded in November of 2019. It's been an excellent project so far. We're excited to continue doing great things here and to bring the project online. It's great to work on projects like this because everyone we've dealt with from the town, and Beth, of course, is so engaged and so involved in the project. That's not always the case, but it's been a really wonderful experience so far. And again, we are very excited and very happy to be working on the project here.
Thanks, Rennie. We appreciate that. In terms of the agenda, Beth, we are in possession of an project overview. If you'd like to take the wheel, no objection here, to bring us through what you're offering the town of Holliston with respect to this project. And maybe at some point, a waypoint, we can begin asking questions. Does that sound okay with you?
That's terrific, and thank you for your kind words. I appreciate it. This has been a really terrific project to work on. As I mentioned, as Rennie just said, you know, working with the board, your town administrator staff, everyone has been so engaged, which has allowed this project, despite some of the challenges every project undertakes, allowing this project really to move forward in an expedited way. I thought I would bring up a slide, actually, that I had presented, if that's okay, to the Board of Health the other day, just as an overview for those that are not familiar with this project, how it got started, where we are, and sort of the general outcome of the financial opportunity that this presents to the town. As I think Rennie mentioned earlier, Soul Systems was selected in November of 2019, but that was as a result of a very comprehensive request for proposals that was issued by the town and the Board of Selectmen on April 17th in 2019. The town hosted a mandatory pre-proposal conference, which was very, very actively participated. We had, I think, over 30 people in the room. It was really an exciting opportunity for everyone. We received 14 proposals, which is significant. I've been doing this for many, many years on projects similar size, and this was one of the most highly-attended procurements with a significant amount of interest from top-tier firms. The Select Board interviewed the top three firms on July 29th.
Beth, I could just ask you to pause real quickly there because I wanted to... I was thinking about this on the ride-in regarding the 14 proposals and the competition for this particular job. I remember sitting at this table, and you were over there, pre-COVID, and we had an exchange about the benefit of a public procurement process versus using state-approved solar vendors. And you had made a point, then, that the market for solar providers was very active, and we would likely experience not only competition, but more favorable rates through the state smart program for the eventual outcome. It was spot-on, in the evidence there with the interest from the private sector as well as the competition of 14 vendors. And ultimately, you know, speaking for the numbers, the Soul Systems presentation, which I think we're going to get into later, really settled above all others. So your advice then, well before any of this was publicly bid, was very sage and spot-on. So keep going. Sorry, just wanted to bring that to light.
No, I appreciate that. You clearly had a business decision put in front of you. Use a procurement method that was available and efficient, but perhaps not the most potentially advantageous. And the Select Board made the right business decision to go out, do your appropriate due diligence, get some price discovery, and participate with a firm who is working very actively and aggressively on behalf of the town. And I think, you know, you'll hear from Rennie shortly, all the work that they've done and the expectations of the progress moving forward. So we started negotiations in November of 2019. There's been a lot of effort that's been underway. The Select Board will soon have the final documents for their review. We're in pretty good shape for that. But notwithstanding that, Soul Systems has been actively involved, working under a temporary access agreement on the landfill and continuing to pursue all of the necessary due diligence to move this project forward in as fast as... Speed is unfortunately, with these projects, not the optimal word because there are so many moving parts, but as efficiently and as effectively as they can to get this project started and completed in as quick a timeframe as they can. So the project that we have before us is about a 3.2-megawatt DC project, or 3,200 kilowatts DC, which is about 2.5 megawatts AC. I mean, it's also paired with battery storage. So we have a, you know, a large-scale battery that's storing some of the kilowatt-hours that are being generated by the solar, and then dispatching them back into the grid to help relieve system capacity issues and other issues on this utility's distribution network. The project is expected to generate about 4.2 million kilowatt-hours, all dependent on the sun, but is certainly geared up to do so. And that's going to offset, as you can see, in kilowatt-hour basis, about almost, you know, the majority of the town's annual kilowatt-hours for municipal government buildings, not residences or businesses, but municipal load. The economic benefits from this project, as you mentioned, John, are significant. There is lease revenue per year in the range of about $373,000 a year, which over 25 years equates to $9.34 million. There's tax or pilot revenue in the range of $57,000, almost $58,000 a year, and that grows to about $1.44 million over 25 years. The energy benefits from net metering, or the kilowatt-hours that are fed into the grid, and the economic benefits that then accrue to the town's accounts, around $79,000 a year, or growing to just under $2 million over 25 years. So the total estimated benefits of this project at this point from a combination of sources, as you can see, is over $500,000, growing to about $12.5 million over the 25-year term. I'm pleased to report to you that we have gone through the pilot analysis, working with the assessors. We have finalized the pilot as accepted by the assessors, and I believe will be, if it hasn't already, proposed to you folks. We've done some true-up with the lease revenue, so the numbers that you see before you are reflective of that. Any questions on the project overview?
Yeah, Tina? Not yet. Keep going.
Excellent. We have a series of documents that we can share, but I thought what might be useful is to, with your permission, is to turn it over to Rennie and maybe talk through the site design, talk through some of the recent changes that have been made to the site design. We've got some renderings that might be useful, just as a visual line of sight renderings that might be useful to take a look at. So, Rennie, if you'd like, I can bring up the sketch plan for you to speak from, if that's...
Yeah, actually, thanks, Beth. I actually have a really quick presentation. Well, I hope it's really quick. It's about 10 slides, and the sketch plan's part of that. Maybe I could share that, and we can dial through that. And then if there's anything else, you know, we certainly have all the other documents available here that we can pull up.
Great.
So let me share my screen here. Let's see. Can everybody see my screen, which should be the opening slide of a PowerPoint?
Yes.
Excellent. And can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Great. So before we get started, I just wanted to kind of point one thing out. So again, Soul Systems is, you know, the company that I work for, the company that is developing this project. We are the long-term owner and operator of the project also. You will see on application forums and some of the details, a couple other company names referenced, and I just wanted to touch on that real quick. One is SCS, which stands for Soul Customer Solutions. That is the development arm or development company within Soul Systems. And another one is SCS Marshall. Then there's some numbers, Holliston LLC. Again, that is a company that is... It's a special-purpose vehicle. It's an LLC created specifically for this project. It's owned by Soul Systems. And, you know, the reason that's created is the assets associated with the project, the solar assets, will actually be owned by that LLC. And as you folks may or may not be aware, one of the incentives associated with solar development of this kind is the investment tax credit. So there's tax implications there and a lot of behind-the-scenes financing that goes on that is done by people much more intelligent than I am, so I won't try to explain it. But again, rest assured, Soul Systems, we are your single point of contact. We are the developer. We are going to hire the firm and manage it, that builds it, and we are the long-term owner and operator of the systems. Just wanted to touch on that real quick. So I believe you all know where the project is, but just to kind of recap, you know, it's located on top of the closed and capped Holliston landfill. So here, you can see the general project footprint here, kind of outlined in red. Here in the southwest, you can see this is the existing recycling center that will remain existing and remain operational. You can see the soccer fields up here to the north, the soccer parking lot, and you can see this one practice field over here to the west, and then, of course, the road here in blue, Marshall Street. Here's a couple photos of current site conditions, just in case you're wondering what the top of a closed landfill looks like. You all have done an excellent job. This landfill's been closed and capped for over 30 years. It's in very, very good shape. The photo on the top left here is standing on top of a landfill. You can see that white pipe in the middle is one of the gas vents that we have surveyed. We know where it is. We will not be impacting that. And this photo is looking north, so you can barely hear in the background see those soccer fields. And then the photo here in the bottom right is more standing at the very edge of the recycling center there, the transfer facility, kind of looking up into the top of the landfill over here where the solar project is going to go. Just a general project summary. As Beth mentioned, it's about 3.2-megawatts DC, which is about 2.5-megawatts AC. That equates to roughly 8,000 panels. The panels will be installed on fixed tilt racking. They'll be mounted to concrete ballasts, which are effectively large concrete blocks. That's a very key component of this project because there is a cap, an engineered cap that's placed over the landfill. That cap is very important to the integrity of the closed landfill. Treating that cap with care, not impacting the cap, is of utmost importance to us. So instead of driving posts into the ground, like you might do for some other solar projects, it's a ballasted system. So the concrete blocks lay on top of the cap, and there is a lot of engineering and analysis that goes into those weight calculations, and again, making sure that the weight on the cap is not going to have an adverse impact also. In addition to the panels, we do have 1.25-megawatts DC of battery storage. There will be five separate Samsung lithium-ion batteries containers. Each of those is in a separate enclosed container that measures roughly 20 feet long, 10 feet wide, and 8 feet tall. The way to think about it, it's about the size of a Conex box, each one of these, and there'll be five of those total. Each of these containers does have an individual HVAC system. They need to be kept at a very specific temperature, the batteries inside, to make sure that they're functioning properly. But the HVAC system, while it will make some noise if you're standing next to it, it will be smaller and quieter than a typical HVAC system for your house. Your house is likely much, much larger than 20 by 10 by 8, and you have an HVAC unit that can keep your house at a certain temperature. So each of these five will have its own small HVAC unit. In addition, each of these five... Yes?
Rennie, can I ask you a quick question about the battery storage issue? Is there any special... Is there any special fire control or dispersant method in the containers needed? Has this been run by our fire department?
It has been run by the fire department, yes. So we sent them some information and had a very good call with them earlier in this week. The high-level overview is that there's a couple different... Let me stop sharing my screen so we can have a conversation. Stop sharing. There are a couple of different safety measures, but probably the most critical ones. One is it does have a fire suppression system inside that is automatic. I don't know the exact details of what it is, but, you know, a foam-type substance that if it does detect a fire, it's automated, and that can be sprayed and kind of encapsulate the fire and contain it. There is also an automatic alert to not only us as the owner-operator, but to the fire department also. And there's a commissioning process that goes along with these batteries. The fire department will be part of that process to learn, you know, where the emergency valves are, the emergency gear, and, you know, what a notification will look like, what triggers a notification, how that comes in, all of those types of things.
So thank you very much for that answer. I'm sorry to interrupt your presentation. I think it's a critical point here. Could I ask our fire chief to weigh in regarding onsite water and/or hydrant services? Because it sounds like the containers that will hold the batteries, Rennie, will be suppressed with, I'm guessing, a dry gas or an FM2000 or something like that. But outside, is there a hydrant onsite? Is there something that can help our fire department event that's needed? Questions for Mike Asti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, there are hydrants on the street, on the municipal water supply system. It is not customary to provide a hydrant on the solar array area itself just because of the combination of different infrastructure, of trying to lay a water line in the area that you're trying to obviously not disturb because of the cap. Based on what we have on the fire apparatus, we're very comfortable that if we need water for the areas beyond the battery storage, we absolutely could bring that water closer to where any incident were with the hoses we have on our apparatus.
Thanks very much, Mike. Rennie, I appreciate giving us the opportunity to interrupt you there on that point. You can continue.
Not a problem at all. Just share my screen again. So each of these battery storage containers, in addition to having the battery inside, it will have four 125-kilowatt inverters. Again, each container will have four individual inverters. These inverters are what turn the power from DC or direct current, which is not really usable, into AC or alternating current, which is usable power.
Sorry, Rennie.
These inverters will... Yes?
Can you... For some reason, we're not actually... It says that you're sharing the screen, but we don't see it. Could you just try to unshare and reshare, maybe?
Oh, absolutely. Apologies for that. Let me see. I probably clicked the wrong button here. Stop sharing. How about now?
There you go.
Yep, excellent. Apologies for that. So each of these inverters does make, again, a small amount of noise only when the system is producing power, which is only during the day when the sun is out. The noise levels associated with each of these inverters, if you're standing about a meter away, which is three feet, so you're inside the fence, you're basically right next to it, is a little bit less than 65 dB. By the time you get about 250 feet away, which that's the nearest home across the road there, is roughly 250 feet, you're at less than 30 dB. As a comparison, typical ambient noise levels for residential areas such as this are about 48 to 50 dB. So very, very quiet. You likely will not even be able to hear it. And again, these inverters only make noise during the day when the sun is out and the system is producing power. I also want to note that these noise numbers are just for an inverter that is outside, and these inverters will be inside of the enclosed battery boxes, which will kind of help further dampen any noise that they might output there. As required by the National Electric Code, we're going to have a seven-foot-high chain-link fence to surround the entire facility, including the battery storage area. Again, similar to the panels where that fence is going on top of the cap, that will be a ballasted fence also. So the fence will be placed in concrete blocks, which will go on top of the cap. There will be no fence post driven through the cap. There will be the required signage as well. And for a rough area inside of the fence, quote-unquote, it's about eight-and-a-half acres total. So here is our latest plan. I do have a more zoomed-in version on the next slide, but just kind of wanted to point out a couple of things here. So again, you can see where our panels are going, which is on top of the landfill. You can see the existing recycling center here to the southwest that will remain operational. You can just see the bottom edge of the soccer fields here to the north. That's roughly 250 feet or so. Again, you can see here across the street, there is that one home that I referenced. Over here out on the east side, you see a lot of different colored lines. There are some environmental features here over on the east, and these are the associated buffers and setbacks from them. Over here to the east, again, over here to the south, and kind of one just small isolated pocket up here to the northwest. So you'll note that we've taken very special care to make sure that we are fully outside of the impact zones associated with those environmental features. If you saw previous versions of this plan, as Beth noted, you may have seen that the equipment pad was originally located in this general area, again, more in the recycling center. But through coordination with the town and coordination with Department of Public Works, we can understand that that's really not a viable option, that not only do they need, you know, all the space that's currently there, but there might be some additional operations there or, you know, minor expansion of this area. So again, we wanted to be very cognizant of that, so able to find an alternate home where the equipment pad and associated access to the system could be placed. So here's just a little bit more zoomed-in version. It's the exact same plan. I just cropped it and zoomed in a little bit. Again, it kind of gives you a little bit better sense of all the solar panels here. You can see some of these gaps. If you look real close, those little blue circles, those are those gas vents that I showed you in the picture and that I said, you know, we have detailed field survey. We're going to, you know, not be placing panels over top of those. Those will still operate, as they currently do. Those will still be able to be accessed. This neon green line is the seven-foot-high chain-link fence. You can see it does encompass the full extents of the solar array and will encompass the equipment pad with the batteries on it also. And what's shown here in gray is an access road. So not only access here off of the main street with associated fire turnaround area, but also access to the top of the landfill. And just a couple of renderings that we had done. Again, these are renderings. It's meant to give a sense of how far away things are, how big the facility is. So here's one from the southeast corner of the parking lot from the soccer field. You can see the system just a little bit here in the background here. And then if you were standing on the soccer field in the area closest to the facility, you will be able to see it just a little bit. The top of the landfill does start to slope down towards the soccer field. In order to maintain our system size, we do plan on putting some panels on that downslope there. So again, you will be able to see it from back here, but it's about 250 feet away. Wanted to touch on the critical path of the project. So as Beth mentioned, the interconnection process is a critical path here. It was known since day one. Every shortlisted firm that went through the interview process noted the exact same thing, that critical path was going to be interconnection. So we wanted to submit the interconnection as soon as possible. And just for some context, any solar project of this magnitude, we're going to be connecting to the existing utility grid, Eversource's existing utility infrastructure. So we need to go through the prescribed interconnection process with them. It is a fairly lengthy process, but it's critical to make sure that our project and other projects that have interconnected or will interconnect are doing so in a safe manner and that Eversource, you know, has the capacity on their lines and the safety measures in place, again, to ensure that the projects and the grid function well. So just a brief timeline of interconnection. Again, we were awarded the project in November of 2019, and we submitted our interconnection application prior to the end of that year, December 20th, 2019. February 3rd of last year, the application was accepted. We got our draft estimate. We got our draft SIS issued September of last year, and then there was an additional project-level dynamic analysis, and that study was issued about a month ago. So far, all of the studies we've gotten back on a project level look very good, very encouraging. And what I mean by that are, there's no indications yet that there would be a a sub, a upgrade that Eversource would require for this project that would have a negative financial impact. So, again, the first four bullets are all on a project level, but given the amount of solar that's currently online in Massachusetts and is planned to come online in Massachusetts, there are bigger-picture group analyses that are now required to be done for many projects, and our project is is one of them. So, ASO stands for Affected System Operator. And Eversource has communicated to us that likely next month, we will know what level of ASO they are going to require this project to go through. Again, it isn't anything that's that's in our control. It's not like if we make the project smaller, we could, we would have to make it a lot smaller to have to avoid this. But it's not like if we changed our equipment, we could get out of this. It's part of the process that you have to go through. So, if we're only required to go through a Level 01, we would anticipate that we would have issuance of our Interconnection Service Agreement, or ISA, around June of this year. We would then mobilize to the site in the fall with the goal of bringing the system online by the end of the year. If, however, we are required to go through a Level 3 ASO, that is a lengthier process. In that case, we would be looking to obtain our Interconnection Service Agreement, or ISA, at the very beginning of next year. We'd mobilize to the site in the spring and bring the system online in the fall. And of course, I have a little disclaimer at the bottom, future date subject to change. That's not saying that we're going to extend timeframes on anyone. I just want to, you know, note, if we don't get our ISA until the very end of June, and there's bad weather in the fall, the system might not be on online until early next year. So, but these are our anticipated timeframes right now. And again, we should have more clarity into this sometime within the next month.
Could I ask a brief question on that, either to Rennie or Beth? If you had to put some money on either outcome, could you give us an idea of which direction we should hope to lean on? Are we more likely under ASO 1 or ASO 3, in your opinion?
Or you want to take a shot at that? I'll give my opinion afterwards.
Yeah, so we've gotten some very preliminary feedback that is encouraging, and if I had to bet, I would bet on a Level 01. Certainly not a guarantee, and I do want to note that there's always the chance, if you go through a 01, at the end of it, they say, based on this quicker analysis, you actually do need a Level 3. Again, it's a small chance, but it still is a chance. So, odds are it's only a Level 01, but not guaranteed.
And I would add that we had an opportunity to look at the graphic of of the sort of the congestion of projects on Eversource's system, and there is significant amount of congestion in areas not immediately adjacent to us, to this project. So, I think that's very promising. You know, parts of the Cape and other areas that Eversource serves where there's a lot more open geography have a significant amount of congestion, and that's actually sort of holding up our project as they go through that study. But we'll see. As Rennie said, I think it was encouraging that that because of the, you know, the lower amounts of congestion, that we may not be as impacted as other areas of the state might be.
I guess that's as good as we can expect right now. It's encouraging. And again, you you mentioned it, Rennie. Could you remind us again, when would we expect to hear one way or another on that?
So, we're anticipating knowing by the end of February.
Thank you.
All right, so only two more slides here for for me. Can everyone see the presentation again?
Yeah.
So, while we've been going through the interconnection process over the last year or so, there have been a number of other items that we've been undertaking at a project level. We've had a full Alta Topographic Survey done, we've done a geotechnical investigation, a wetland delineation, Phase 1 environmental site assessment. There have been closed landfill inspections done, both by the Towns Consultant Kleinfelder, as as well as our consultant, TRC. We've also been able to, because of the the way the project is set up, we've been able to lock in our smart incentive block. That is very key, because the way the smart program works in the state, it is a declining block program, so there's only so much capacity per block. And once a block fills up, it goes to the next block, the, excuse me, the next block, which has a lower compensation rate. And so, it was key to the project to be able to get our block locked in as early as possible, and we have been able to achieve that. That incentive block is locked in.
It's Block 4.
There, there would be a... It is Block...
Block 4.
Four, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Beth. Block 4. Just a couple other permits and approvals that that will be out there, that we'll be obtaining. There's, of course, the the post-closure use permit, or PCUP, that is issued by Mass Department of Environmental Protection. We've been working with with the town and the Towns Consultant Kleinfelder on this package. It is a very involved, very analysis and engineering-intensive package, as well it should be. And again, to make sure that the work we're going to be doing will not negatively impact the cap, the closed landfill, anything like that. That submission is pending, and what I mean by that, it is basically teed up and ready to go. So, that submission will be occurring soon. And we'll also also be filing with the town a notice of intent, or NOI, with the Conservation Commission. In the future, once we've chosen our contractor to build the project, they will put together the full building permit packages, and those will be submitted to the town also. And I just wanted to take one key moment to touch on a couple of health and safety items associated with the project. First, the panels themselves. Panels now are made almost entirely of silicon, which is a stable, common, naturally occurring element, material. So, what that means, in the very unlikely event that a panel were to break or crack in some way, shape, or form, it is not, there are not hazardous materials inside of the panel, which 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 could cause a health threat. So, so the panels themselves, the panels themselves, excuse me, are very, very safe. Something else that we get asked about is electromagnetic fields, or EMF. And while solar arrays do generate some amount of electromagnetic radiation, it's done at very low levels. In fact, the the amount generated by a solar project and by solar panels is actually less than things you encounter in everyday life, radio waves, infrared radiation, visible light. And just for some context, for some numbers, if you're standing about three feet away from your fridge, that's about six MGs. About three feet from microwave is 50. 150 feet from a utility-scale solar inverter, and this is not a utility-scale project that's smaller, and we have smaller inverters, but 150 feet away from a much larger inverter than what we have is only 0.5 MGs. So, again, while it's not zero, it's very, very close, and you encounter more EMF in just your everyday life, walking through your house, than than you would if you were playing soccer, or at the transfer station, or driving by the project on the road. Actually, even if you were standing right next to it also. And again, just just as a as a order of magnitude comparison, recommended field exposure for the general project public is 2,000 MGs. So, very, very safe, very clean energy source. And that wraps up my presentation. I will stop sharing my screen for the time being, so I can answer any questions, but can certainly pull the presentation back up or anything else that we need to.
Thanks, Rennie. I think we'll start with my colleague Ben Sparrow. Any questions?
Thank you. First of all, I just, you know, I'm newer to this whole process, so I'm just trying to get up to speed. So, I do want to thank both of you for the detailed nature of your presentation, being able to see a lot of this stuff. You've answered some of my questions just in these presentations. I really appreciate the the amount of effort you put into putting this together, so I wanted to say thank you to start. So, I do have a couple of questions. My first question is about security of the site. One of the things, just just curious, like, what are we doing to make sure that we can maintain the integrity of the site? Do we have anything like cameras or anything like that, watching different key access points or potential places? And if there's any other measures that you're putting in place besides the fence?
Yeah, so, so, so it's a great question. So, in addition to the fence and, you know, the according controlled access gate through that fence, there's a couple of other items to to talk about from a safety and security standpoint. One is just the monitoring of the system itself. One of the kind of nice things about the way the project is set up is that we, as the owner-operator, only get paid for as much electricity as the system puts out there and puts on the grid. So, it is in our very best interest to make sure the system is functioning as good and as as appropriately and 100% at all times. The way we do that is we have a very active, minute-by-minute, real-time monitoring system that the actually, the town will be able to view as well. We're going to be placing kiosks where the town can be able to see this information. You can see at any moment in time exactly how much power the system is is putting out. On our end, we'll have some more details controls, we can see each inverter, and so we'll know if anything is not functioning properly right away. And we track that, and we monitor that, again, because we want to make sure the system's functioning 100% at all times. So, if there's ever an issue with a panel, or a wire, or an inverter, we'll know about it right away, and we'll be able to go out and fix that. So, so that's kind of one key thing, is, you know, having that real-time monitoring of the of the system itself. And in addition to that, you know, there are typical regularly scheduled maintenance checks, probably three to four times per year, where we're out there, you know, tightening bolts, checking wires, again, to try to prevent any of those issues from happening, were they to more kind of naturally happen. So, from a safety standpoint with the system itself, you know, that's that's a very important feature that that we have. To your question about cameras, so I've actually been having this conversation with my with my internal team, and I don't want to right now say 100% that we're going to do cameras, but it's very, very likely that we're going to be doing cameras, and I should be able to confirm that 100% here very, very soon. So, in all likelihood, we we will be having cameras on this site also.
Okay, great. So, my my next question is a little bit, just thinking about like the technology that's being utilized here, and, you know, forgive me, because I'm a neophyte to this stuff, so I'm trying to figure out some of these things, so I might be putting the cart before the horse with some of these questions. But, you know, certainly, things with solar, there's a lot of new technologies coming about and changes and potential, like more efficiencies and things like that with better panels. Is there any, would there be any potential for upgrading or changing the panels down the road if some new technologies came about? Or is it something where basically we're putting it in, and that's it? It's basically there, and we're going to replace it if it's broken, kind of thing?
So, in general, the plan is that for the panels, the panels we install will be the panels for the for the current contracted life of the project, which is 25 years. At the at the end of the 25 years, we can, and there's basically three options that the town has. If everything's working great, we can enter into another agreement and and extend the life of the project. The town can purchase the system from us, and then it's your system to own and operate. And if that time, if you want to come in and 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 repower the system, is kind of what it's called, if you swap out panels, that's an option. Or if the town wants to use the landfill for some other reason, or everyone's just kind of happy and done with the project, we will come on at our cost and decommission the entire system and take everything off. But in the 25-year life of the project, there there isn't currently a plan to swap out with with newer panels. Part of the reason is just, you know, the the capital costs and the way that the financial models run, it'd be very challenging to to try to model that and make that work. Another reason is that while there is advanced technology, and the solar technology is certainly in the upswing of that bell curve, the panels don't have, always have the exact same specs. So, while a newer panel might have more kilowatts, or might be more productive from a power standpoint, it might be a little bit larger or a little bit longer, meaning it wouldn't fit necessarily on the racking we have out there, which means that the concrete ballast blocks that we have out there might not work either. So, so there's those kinds of complications also. Additionally, our interconnection application with the utility company is only for a certain amount of power output. So, if there were a new panel to come out that has a lot more power capacity and is the same size, or new inverter, it'd be challenging to make that change as well, because Eversource on their end has only accounted for our system being able to output so much power.
Gotcha. Okay, so that makes sense. Thank you. And my last question is about the batteries. What is the lifespan of those batteries? Do they last the full, the full term for 25 years?
That is an excellent question that I honestly do not know the answer to, but I can get the answer for you. We have a whole team of engineers, we have a battery expert, that I rely on for all that kind of stuff. So, let me get that answer for you. Apologies that I don't have it now, though.
No, that's okay. It's a very specific question. So, yeah, just kind of along the same lines as the panels, is that, you know, is there potential for replacing the batteries because of the lifespan or degradation of those batteries? Would be my my inquiry.
Yeah, the the panels degrade, I think it's half to a quarter percent every year, but that's all accounted for in the modeling, and the batteries do degrade a slight amount as well. But again, I believe that's all accounted for. There might be certain parts that are replaced, but but let me get a more detailed answer for you there.
I think the cells, I think the the battery cells will, like all lithium-ion batteries, will likely, they're going to need to be replaced during the term of the agreement. The nice thing is, the solar incentive program, the smart program, provides incentives specifically for the batteries, so the batteries need to be operational. So, if Soul Systems is not getting long-term O and M and extended warranties on the batteries, then they're planning in their financial models to replace the components necessary to keep the batteries operational over the term.
Okay, great. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Yeah, a couple of different things. It was mentioned earlier, the commitment that Soul Systems has made to the Town of Holliston is that you will be owner-operator of the solar array. That's a pretty tremendous benefit for the Town of Holliston, and that security, maintenance, and all of that falls under the responsibility of Soul Systems. Is that fair to say?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Nope.
I have four other, four other areas of questioning. In terms of the contract, there's a decommissioning bond that is a part of the contract. I believe it's for 100,000, thereabouts. Can you describe or explain the risk of Soul Systems decommissioning before the 25-year contract period? I mean, we're looking at significant revenue here for the Town of Holliston, and so can you just describe to me the level of risk for the Town of Holliston if Soul System were to make a decision to decommission before the 25 years?
So, Beth, I might look to you, but I don't, I don't know if we can.
So, that's a...
Choose to decommission without paying tremendous penalties.
Right. So, the decommissioning assurance is in place in the event of default, which we're, of course, not expecting. And if the town made the determination that it wanted the assets off of its property, and to ensure that there's sufficient funds to make that happen, if Soul Systems was not in a position to do that. But the parties are engaging for the entire term, and there are provisions tied to early termination liabilities if either party terminates early. So, the expectation is, all things going smoothly, the parties stay, you know, covered under those contractual arrangements.
Okay.
I just kind of have one thing, which is that Beth has also been working on that agreement with our council, not Jay Tellerman, but within that firm, Lisa Mead, so looking at sort of the protections for the town within within that agreement.
Okay, great. And then in terms of construction, I know that initially, it's not what it is today, but initially there, the concrete pads were within the area of the recycling center. That's since been moved, that's what you showed us tonight. They're outside of the area of the recycling center. So, Rennie, I have a question for you, and the traffic, I have a question for you. Will improvements be... Will improvements be made, Rennie, through the access to the site? And I think there are possibly some changes in fencing. Will improvements be made that expand the recycling center for the Town of Holliston when construction is finished? Or we'll have what we have today?
So I think the general answer is you'll have what you have today. There, yeah, there's no plan, at least from Soul Systems' part, no planned direct improvements to the recycling center itself.
Okay. And Travis, is DPW aware of that? Are they?
Yeah, so when we did a walkthrough, and because there were a couple of options where the pad was going to go, the concern was, you know, right now it's sort of more towards the, not the soccer field, but the practice field, which has its own access point, which makes it optimal if the other sort of area they could have gone in would have actually taken away from our space within the recycling center and would have probably negatively impacted
Okay.
our service and what we may be able to scale up to do with that area. And that was the main concern to DPW. And so the area that Rennie showed earlier is one that's advantageous, one because it's not going to negatively impact our recycling center. And two, it does have its own sort of access point that's closer to the road, which has benefits as well. But so, no, it's sort of the pad not being in the recycling center means that there will not be sort of improvements to the roadway, which could have been, would have been part of it. But at the same point, that roadway would have taken space away from the town operation.
I understand. Thank you. Okay, thank you. And then in terms of planning, tonight you're looking for, the reason for tonight's public hearing is in order to move forward on the lease agreement, signing the lease agreement?
It's a combination of things. It's a combination of proceeding forward in getting executable documents in front of you folks to sign, but also to update the public on the project, respond to any questions or concerns that either the select board has or the public has. We do, we have prepared a series of Q and A that we thought would be beneficial for the community to have available, along with, as you saw Rennie presented, some line of site renderings and some other things that we thought would be beneficial for folks to get a better understanding of the project in general.
Okay. Because I noticed that for the notice of intent to DEP under the Wetlands Protection Act, we also need a public hearing. This meeting tonight does not satisfy that requirement. That's something that the Conservation Commission will hold?
Right.
And that has not yet taken place?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And then, all right, last question, the application for the post-closure use permit, that's still to come. We're not addressing that this evening.
There are a series of documents that will need town signature as the town being a co-applicant on. The application for post-closure use permit is in fact one of those documents where the town will be a co-applicant on the application itself. There's a cover letter that needs a signature and a series of documents that support that cover letter that are being packaged together in one easy-to-view location.
Okay. And I think the expectation is that we sign some of those this evening?
So they're generally meant to be signed by the chair. It's the backup documentation. Beth and Rennie and Jeff, who's also here, are sort of compiling to make sure that we're in good shape. And so, yeah, at this point, you know, one of the things is confirming that we're a co-applicant is going to help move along this process. So a number of the things, you know, what we can discuss with Beth on the best way to, and when to send them in, but they are here to be signed, will be sent in once, you know, we have confirmation from Beth and legal that we're all set and we'll send them in.
Okay, great. I have no other questions. Thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a series of questions. Rennie, this question is more of a corporate question. It comes from a space where I did some research through my professional job and encountered a very large-scale solar project down at Crystal Community College, which we were researching that was done probably about five or 10 years ago. And it was a very sizable project. And right after it was put into construction, the company left and abandoned the project or sold its interest to another solar system. And it really upended their planning. It was a lesson learned for them that they imparted to us as folks trying to learn a little bit about the business. What kind of commitment can you give the Town of Holliston as a corporate partner, Rennie, representing the corporate partner, that Soul Systems is in this and you don't have any plans to flip this to the next solar company that offers you a better deal?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a, that's a great question. That's one of the things that we feel sets Soul Systems apart as a developer of these types of solar projects. And I could talk about this for quite a long time, so I'll try to boil it down to the key facts. But about a year and a half ago, Soul Systems formed a joint venture partnership with a firm called Capital Dynamics. Excuse me. Capital Dynamics. They're one of the leading owners of clean energy and clean infrastructure in the US and in the world. That joint ventureship is what effectively created SCS, or Soul Customer Solutions, which is the development arm within Soul Systems. So the way we finance these projects is Capital Dynamics is the project financier. And their structure, they are the long-term owner. Soul Systems does the asset management and the O and M for the capital, for the projects that Capital Dynamics finances that we develop and that we build for them. So it's a very integrated team. And again, the town has a single point of contact, which is Soul Systems. Soul Systems is a company, you know, backs all of this. But just so you have a little bit of insight to where the money actually comes from to finance and build the projects, it's with our partner that is, you know, part owner of the Soul Systems Development Company or SCS.
I would also add
Good enough, I think. Go ahead, Beth.
I'm sorry. I would also add that one of the changes that the Commonwealth made when it went from the predecessor Solar Renewable Energy Credit Incentive Program, the SREC program, to the new SMART program, was that it changed the solar incentives from a very market-based, which in some cases is good, but in other cases is very volatile, market-based program that lasted 10 years to a long-term, less financially attractive, but long-term incentive program that lasts 20 years. And so there is a constant stream of revenue that flows into these projects for a longer period of time, which helps smooth out the bumps and eliminate some of the high-level transactions that happen on the financial side as investors want to go in and out. So it provided some additional certainty, reduced the risk. And I think we've learned a lot in the Commonwealth, those early-on projects, there were many developers that came in, some are now gone. They offered, you know, offers that looked too good to be true. And in fact, they were, they were good enough to be built, but not good enough to sustain. And, you know, my compliments to the entire, to the town, to you folks for doing your proper due diligence to pick a partner that has the ability to be in this, in this contract for the terms that they're engaging in.
Great answers. I appreciate that. My follow-up questions are a little bit more succinct and mainly for you, Rennie, if I could. Was the site survey performed for this location by Soul Systems to determine the boundaries and the locations of the various infrastructure, fence lines and so forth?
Yeah, so the site survey was done. We partnered with a leading civil and environmental firm called TRC. We have Jeff Brandt with TRC on the, on the call here also. But TRC is our lead civil and environmental engineer and they're the ones that did the survey. But yes, we directly contracted to have it done.
For the commissioning of the project, does Soul Systems envision any tree clearing, additional tree clearing or any tree clearing on the property?
There will be a minimal amount of tree clearing that's needed for where the batteries are going to go, where that larger pad is going to be placed. There will need to be some, a limited amount of tree clearing done for that, yes.
And that's something I'm sure the Conservation Commission will be more interested in, but thanks for being open about that. A couple of things, back in early December, I believe through Travis, Beth, you asked for the board feedback on some asks or some questions about the program. I contributed my questions through Travis. I don't know how far they got, whether or not they landed in your inbox. But one of the things I was curious about is, will this project yield a charging station at the solar project site? Has that been thought about?
That's not currently planned.
Okay. That's fine. I'm just, uh... The last question I have is I had asked if Soul Systems, because I recall during the presentation that Soul Systems did to us, that they had a commitment to the local communities that they work with through education, promotion. You just mentioned the fact that you have a publicly available dashboard so people can see the solar generation, Rennie. Is there an opportunity for you through Soul Systems to present scholarship opportunities to Holliston High School students that might be studying sustainable energy, environmental science and so forth? Have you folks explored that option?
Yes, and that's actually, I'm very glad you brought that up. I didn't include it in the PowerPoint, but kind of wanted to focus that more on the geographics and the technical details of the project. But absolutely. Soul Systems has made a commitment to the town and we're going to start, what's the right word? We do have a commitment for a scholarship program. Our anticipation, our hope is that we're able to award the first of those at the end of this school year. So, you know, in the May to June timeframe. We've partnered with a Holliston student at the high school, Akshara Shankar. She's been wonderful. She's been tremendous to work with. And, you know, through her, we're going to kind of roll out this scholarship program in the very near future. There's also some other attributes there that I kind of want to highlight. We're going to be sponsoring a local soccer team through the youth soccer organization. Again, we'll be rolling that out here in the very near future. Probably the main reason why those haven't been rolled out yet unfortunately is COVID. You know, we had, we had an old school program where we were there and a lot of our plans got a little shuffled because of that. So, but yes, those commitments are still commitments that we stand behind and we're actually very, very excited to move those forward.
Rennie, Akshara said she'd be here, except she's just come home from swim practice. So she might be on the call in a few minutes, but she was sorry to miss it.
That's it for my questions. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to any questions from those assembled on the Zoom call. If you're interested, please raise your hand as we indicated earlier, you'll be recognized. Hearing none, we'll move on. Do you folks have anything else to present to us this evening?
I do not.
Are you good, Beth?
I'm good.
All right. So we'll conclude this form of our presentation this evening. I want to thank you both again for joining us. The project's been moving along, notwithstanding the virus. We appreciate the hard work that's gone into it. Travis has kept us all informed. Renee, a lot of great work, our compliments to your company so far. Please stay the path and hopefully by the end of February, we'll learn more about that critical milestone relative to the timeframe, which I'm keenly interested in knowing about. That timeframe will help us feed our FY '22 budget planning and so forth. So it's meaningful. Beth, you have our continued gratefulness and best wishes. So please stay in touch. Let us know how things are shaking out. And so at this point, I think we can let you folks wrap. That is it for our agenda this evening, Mr. Hahn, unless you have any other questions?
I did have comments so that we would have some time. I have a couple of comments.
All right, Beth. So we're going to move on to some other additional comments at this point.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Go right ahead, Mr. Hahn. The floor is yours. Yeah, so I just added the space for comments from the town administrator and board business if anything were to come up. I don't have anything that I know of for board business. So at the moment, just on the comments from the town administrator, the heavy commercial vehicle exclusion, or more succinctly, I guess, the traffic engineering study RFQ wrapped today at 4:00. We ended up with two submissions. I need to put those into a form that is comparable and hopefully put it on our agenda for Monday if we feel like we can make a selection. Information went out from Rep. Dykema on bond bill updates. So I will be looking to see if in the not-too-distant future, we can either have an update from them in writing or if they'd be interested in coming to present those opportunities to us. Today with the MMM conference, a number of other opportunities have been presented from what was rolled out on the state side. So I need to have some time to decipher those and bring them back for presentation soon. But all, you know, opportunities abound, I suppose. Additionally, a change was made today that we are no longer to have a hard cap of 9:30 starting on Monday. The agenda for Monday was already posted for 6:30, although I think there would be interest from at least one member to go back to the 7:00 PM start time now that we don't have the 9:30 cap. And so I don't have the opportunity to change the Monday agenda, so it will start at 6:30. But then moving forward, I think, you know, we may end up going back to the 7:00 PM since we won't have the
Any objection to 7:00 PM?
7:00 PM is fine, isn't it?
No problem.
Okay. So we will look for that probably starting February 1st to go back to 7:00 PM. And that is all I have at the moment. And so I also have board business on here if there's anything that you had.
No, I just want to point out, Travis, regarding this project, please make an attempt to have a conversation with the youth soccer association. They do have an interest in the project, which is want to make sure they understand what's going on going forward.
So I was actually wondering, John, if that's how it came to be, that Rennie proposed that idea, that they, because they were involved early in the Holliston. So I'm hoping they've already been contacted by Soul Systems.
I have not.
Just that it could fall up.
Yep, absolutely.
Well, yeah, the renderings have modified a little bit, probably since they've seen it, including the entry point for their station.
That's true.
So, I mean, among other things, I'd be concerned about signage on the fence, telling kids to stay away, that kind of stuff, you know, but
Absolutely. No, and this similar presentation, but a little bit different sort of focus was given to the Board of Health on Tuesday night. And as they said, there will be more public discussions when it comes to the Concom and those types of things. So any questions that come up in your minds that didn't get asked tonight, just let me know. We'll continue to get those answers. And, you know, we can obviously bring back Beth at any time that, you know, you feel you need an update. But right now, I think, you know, as you pointed out, major milestone is going to be at the end of February. We can get that ACO 01, ASO, excuse me, 01, I think we're going to be
Good shape.
In good shape, yeah.
Regarding the forms that Ben just handed me, do these require any vote of the board before we sign them or just go ahead and do it?
No, I think the only thing I would point to, because you did select this group, what we're doing is staying, you know, sort of staying in compliance, we're saying that we're in support of this to DEP and that we are a co-applicant with it, is that I will not submit these until I receive word from Lisa Mead at MCC and Beth that they are comfortable. And then I would submit them if they're signed.
Committed, asked on the lease agreement, that was approved by town meeting vote and that's what gives the authority for John to sign on behalf of the town?
Yes. There has been town meeting votes. There was the procurement process that was already taking place so that, you know, you wouldn't be voting to select or move forward with this group. You've already done that.
Any final questions, Ben?
Nope. Just a quick one, and it may be way out in left field, but I'll ask it. You will be with the town in 25 years. I probably will not be on the select board in 25 years. So I'm going to ask a question. We've talked about using the net metering revenue to go into possibly a revolving fund. Does it make sense to do any kind of an earmark or any type of long, long-term planning so that when the 25-year contract is up, we have some resources available to plan out the next steps? So there are a couple of options that were presented by Rennie tonight. One is that we renew the contract at 25 years and continue that relationship. Another was that they come in and decommission it, remove everything and it goes back to what it is today, just the landfill. And the third is that the town, the town come right out and purchase it and operate it. And so two of the three seem like they require a financial planning on behalf of the town. And is it smart to start thinking about that now? Or is that something that you just get to and get to as the contract is ending?
From a local receipt standpoint, I mean, 25 years is pretty much as good as you get these days. And so from a development standpoint, I don't have a problem necessarily building it into, you know, revenue modeling at 25 years. I would say, you know, we can certainly look at building in, you know, an internal policy to sort of put us, put ourselves in position, whether it be stabilization or anything like that. At the same point, I think, you know, getting into this At the same point, I think, you know, getting into this, there needs to be probably an assumption, as Ben alluded to originally in the, in the conversation on changing technologies, that a picture is going to evolve over time, over, if, if those are removed in 25 years, decommissioned, so to speak, or if we were to come to an agreement to extend it in 25 years, that it would be replacement of technology, and that we would still want to utilize that space, right? So what we're doing right now, turning a cost center into a revenue generator, and, you know, I don't, I can't imagine in 25 years, when I'm still here as the town administrator, that I'm going to say, no, let's just give up that revenue and not come up with a plan that replaces it. At the same point, you know, we certainly, you know, not building in all of the revenue, doing some sort of scaling, you know, looking at stabilizations to make sure we're in good shape, we can discuss all of those, but again, at, at 25 years, I mean, in this sort of, in this realm, is, is pretty much as good as you get.
Okay, all right. I was, because I'm thinking, we have a 17-year-old special fund from when we entered the agreement with the legislature, but then Castell is now Torbento. And that's 17 years old, I believe, at this point in time, and anyway, okay, all right, I hear what you're saying, thank you.
All right, any final thoughts before we adjourn for the evening?
I would just quickly, just to add to what Tina's saying, I think we, we would, might want to think about, even though it is obviously early in the process, but just sort of like some sort of a metric by which we can sort of measure beyond the financial, if there is anything else, so that way we could see, like, down the road, we'd have what, what sort of actions we would want to take, like, you know, it, it's, it's so early in the process, it's like, it almost doesn't matter, but at least maybe we ponder a little bit, to put something in place, to sort of say, like, here's how much electricity is generating, you know, sort of, sort of, some sort of a, like a, a tracking of, of it to that way that, that when, when it does get to the point where the town has to make a decision that, that the data is readily available.
Actually, you know what, I think that sits, I think that sits with a net zero action plan. In the long, we don't have one now, we won't have one for a while, but sometime in the next few years, we will most likely, as a community, develop a net zero action plan, which would be to have all of our energy usage for the town coming from renewable sources. And so it may be that as we're developing that net zero action plan, we start talking about not only that solar array, and, and does it serve a purpose for the Town of Holliston after the 25-year contract, and, and then also other developments, so perhaps that's where the two come together, for planning into the future?
Ironically, looking at the numbers that Beth reported tonight, if you're speaking of net zero usage as a governmental entity, we're nearly there with this plant. Net zero as a community is a different story, of course, but this, this plant, or this power generation is quite significant against our current consumption rate, so, it's me, you know, it's a step in the right direction. Exciting project, I think folks should be pretty proud of what, what's been done to date, I'm just anxious to get it done. Start, start making money on that thing. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some moves?
I can add.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries, we will catch you all Monday evening, our next meeting. I hope everybody has a pleasant evening and a good weekend. Good night.